The regular meeting of the City of Kingman Common Council on Tuesday, December 3rd, at 6:00 PM. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Miles.
Here.
Vice Mayor Linganfilter.
Here.
Councilmember Mello Keener.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Watkins.
Here.
Councilmember Wade.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, the invocation will be given by Jessica Cooper of Hope City Church. Would you please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
If we could all bow our heads, please. Father, we thank you, Lord, for this evening. And, Father, we thank you for these men and women that you chose and you put on this council. We thank you for every leader that's represented in this room. And, Father, we thank you, Lord, that all the decisions that they're making, Father, that all that they're doing, Lord, Father, that is for the benefit of the people in this city. Father, you chose them, and, Father, I know that you will direct them and give them insight. Father, I pray for the people that are here tonight, that they're able to talk and speak, and that they're able to be heard tonight. And I pray that every decision that is made, Father, it will be made with wisdom and discernment. So, Father, we give you this evening. We ask you, Lord, to protect everybody here. We ask you, Lord, we pray health over each and every one of them. And, Father, we thank you for this night. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38431-0383 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Our first order of business tonight is a call to the public, which is comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. We have one person signed up for a call to the public this evening, and that person is Lisa McDonald. Would you please come to the podium?
I want to run up before the city council.
Could you please give us your name and...
Lisa McDonald, and I am a Golden Valley resident. I have lived in and Kingman before, and I am affected by what you guys do in your council. And some of you may remember me before me becoming Lisa McDonald. And I want to say, in supporting the LGBT activists and giving them permits to operate like pride within the city, I see you as supporting unconstitutional and illegal conduct, which I would argue actually crosses the line into criminal conduct. That if one follows the United States Constitution as a person that has legally changed their sex, and if you follow Arizona law and the laws from which the state I changed my sex in, there is no legal right to call me transgender. There is no legal right to include me in the gay community, and that is basically an unconstitutional form of outpatient civil commitment that is killing kids. It's been killing kids forever. And if you look all the way back into the 1970s is when they first started calling the most troubled kids gay. And that created a stigma to the label gay, because the only people you could see that were gay were the most broken and dysfunctional. And it caused a bunch of kids to commit suicide. Now move into the 80s, the HIV epidemic. Well, jeez, did what they do in the 70s work in the 80s? I don't think so when you look at the body counts. And this body count is still growing to this day. We must be seen as individuals. We must have our full rights as United States citizens respected. I spent three years 110 miles behind communist lines in the Berlin Brigade. To this day, I don't feel veteran enough, and I don't feel American enough. And I think everybody who's contributed to this should bow their head in shame. There is no single way to be in a United States citizen. Being a United States citizen is not an either-or proposition between being a Democrat or a Republican. It's being an American. We talk about this spectrum of gender identities and sexual orientation, but why do we never speak about the spectrum of being an American? That there is no real right way to be an American. Actually, the best way to be an American is to thumb your nose up at social control, unconstitutional social control. Groups like the LGBT, groups like the religious right, and I would argue you could not have religious conversion therapy without LGBT activists aiding them. Who did the religious conservative point to when they were doing their conversion therapy as why you don't want to be this way?
Ms. McDonald.
It was the gays.
I think the three minutes is...
Okay, I'm sorry. But I hope you guys sincerely take to heart what I said.
Our next order of business is the consent agenda. All items listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Would any of the council like to remove any of the consent agenda items for discussion? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve consent agenda item A through E.
I'll move to approve consent agenda items A through E.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second to approve the agenda items A through E. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. In old business tonight, we're going to discuss our Parklets and Pedlets program. The Planning and Economic Development Department has been working on a Parklet-Pedlet program for the City of Kingman to implement. Staff researched various Parklet-Pedlet programs throughout the United States and has also requested input from various downtown business owners and city departments. With the information collected, staff compiled a proposed Parklet-Pedlet program. If the Parklet-Pedlet program is approved, the intent is to implement it in January 2020. Staff has recommended that a pilot program be considered to allow for one to three applicants to work with staff for the first year.
Mayor, if I could just weigh in. When we updated the agenda and we added the policy for your review yesterday, the staff recommendation has changed and is no longer the pilot program, but just a straight-up Parklets and Pedlets program for the entire Main Beale Street as outlined in the policy. So, we did not change that, just an oversight. So, the recommendation is just to approve the policy.
The Parklets and Pedlets. Thank you. I appreciate that. Mr. Kellogg.
Member, Mayor, members of the council. This evening, I'm going to give you, and Sylvia will be here assisting me, actually, this is a lady that did most of the really tough groundwork and research. And so, we pieced together what we're going to show you this evening on the PowerPoint is kind of an overview and brief. What you have in front of you is the full-blown thing. Now, there are still some tweaking remaining to be done. One of the things that your city managers ask us to do is to continue to refine the method in which you apply for this, and that is become the one-stop shopping, along with a very simplified form that walks you through engineering, Public Works, et cetera. So, I just wanted to preface it with that. So, we're not done, there's some tweaking, but we'd like to look at the implementation of this program starting January 1. That'll give us the rest of December to kind of just tweak a few little things, but I think we're there. So, with that, just briefly, what is a Parklet? It's a sidewalk extension that provides more space and amenities. I'll just let you guys kind of look at them as opposed to reading through them. Yeah, we've been through this a couple of times with council now, but those definitions really haven't changed, you know? The idea really behind the purpose of the Parklet or the Pedlet is to offer the benefits and change how people view and use public spaces at low capital cost. They create new and many public plazas, many parks that attract people, and they emphasize the pedestrian experience by making the streets beautiful and walkable. Okay? Who can apply? So, again, this will be some of the information you have in front of you. Any property owner who owns commercial business that fronts along East Beale Street from 2nd to 6th. We talked a lot with both engineering and certainly Public Works, and Beale still remains the ideal place. Anything that runs east and west, we don't have the drainage issues that we do nearly as much as any street running north and south. So, again, it confines the area a little bit, but it certainly, I think, would make the program, at least initially, much more workable. When can the application be submitted? Beginning January. Applications may be submitted on an ongoing basis to the Planning and Economic Development Department, PED. There is no deadline to submit the applications. Applications will be reviewed and processed in an order in which they are received, and the Parklet and Pedlet program will be reviewed on a yearly basis to make improvements to the program. We found this in looking at other communities, that it is ongoing, and so this tweaking, that didn't quite work. What do we do? So, Parklet and Pedlet guidelines. Again, the details, scheduling a pre-application meeting, opportunity to discuss the proposal with the city team members, site visit that can be scheduled, and city team members can discuss the submittal requirements. Submittal application fees, you had some concerns before. We had looked at the initial amount of 500. We trimmed that back to 250. That covers all of the permit fees involved for this process, okay? And one application will be submitted to the PED. So, that's how we're going to be able to get this in a very workable form. Project completion, once the Parklet is constructed, it will be inspected. Team members are from various departments. In the final inspection phase, the Parklet and Pedlet will be ready for public use. These are the recommended guidelines, and this is, you're viewing just a portion of them, the rest of them you have in the report in front of you. Must be designed as a temporarily removable structure. This is important, okay? Because in every city that we looked at as an example, as I noted before, a lot of them are snow cities, and so they actually had it where you took it off the street in November, you reintroduced it in April or May, whatever was appropriate. We don't have quite the same weather problems, although last year we did. And so, the Parklet must also be kept and maintained so the structure is safe and appearance is in good condition. May not extend beyond the width of the applicant's business frontage. This is some of the concerns we'll hear expressed a little bit later from folks that we talked to downtown. May not extend into the street more than six feet. No portion of the Parklet or the Pedlet shall be taller than eight feet. One of the concerns that Public Works noted for us is that, you know, we always have to think about what's overhead there. All of our streetlights are running on hotlines, okay? So, those wires, and so anybody that brings in a crane, all that's going to have to be a consideration, if it's needed, to put that in. And we certainly don't want anything tall enough to get into those wires. The Parklet shall buffer of two feet on all sides. Corner Parklet shall have a buffer of five feet, that's in order to maintain the corner. And wheel stops must be placed in the back as buffers. Some of the comments that we see, the PED team members reached out to business owners located within the Parklet-Pedlet boundary, Main Street representatives, Chamber of Commerce, and ask for their comments and their concerns. Business owners contacted, support the program. The main comment was the concern was related to customer parking. And part of the thing that you saw in your packet was this, there is that thing where you inform the neighbors of what you're doing, so that, you know, I think in order to be a good neighbor, because if you start to look at some particular areas, and I'm going to read a letter to you from one of the concerned businesses downtown, you know, some folks could have actually a very long, when you look at the businesses that are side by side, uptake, a very long area for their particular Pedlet or Parklet, whatever they choose. So, the recommendation was to place signage downtown to let customers know where parking is available. We don't have like a municipal parking lot, so we would have some challenges there. PED received email from a concerned downtown business owner, and again, the main concern was parking. So, are there any questions on the initial thing? And if not, I certainly would like to just read this letter, because this was a pretty comprehensive viewpoint from a person who probably would not have a Parklet or Pedlet, but whose business would order that potential.
Vice Mayor.
Do we know which business this is from?
Yes. Yeah, it was, it's Mary Wise and her husband, Tom, and they have, I think, I believe, a jewelry store there. It's at 427 East Beale. So, you can kind of see their concerns, because there's Blackbridge right next to them, and across the street is Buster's, and then Diane's and stuff. So, if it's all right, Mayor, I'll just at least introduce it.
Did you have any other questions, anyone? All right, then, please go ahead.
They called me, and I said, you know, you're certainly always welcome to come to council, express your feelings on this. And she said, well, I'm just a little bit gun-shy in front of a group. I said, well, why don't you just feel free to send me an email, and I'll be happy to pass it on. So, hello, my name is Mary Wise. My husband, Tom, and I have been a business owner as well as a property owner, and at 423 and 427 East Beale Street for the past 15 years. The purpose of this email is to express my opinion on the proposed Parklets-Pedlets issue. Back in October, when I first read an article in the Kingman Miner on the subject, I was immediately concerned what their presence would mean to the parking situation. At this time, the lack of ample parking in the downtown area has been labeled a concern by some. Without a remedy to the parking issues, Parklets and Pedlets will only cause the issue to deepen. Here are my thoughts. One, because the length will be determined by the existing building length, they can take a sufficient amount of parking spaces off the street. They could cause a change to the parking space rotation. While retail businesses may have a quicker turnover in regards to this rotation, food and drink establishments could see a longer turnaround timeframe. In my block, there are three food and drink businesses. If all choose to take advantage of the Parklet-Pedlet, it would definitely cut down on the available parking spaces. And three, there are needs of customers. Some of those shopping in the downtown like to park close to the business they wish to go into. Some enjoy strolling up and down the street, and the needs of all customers are important. My understanding is that the council is considering a year testing period to see actually, and this was prior, okay, actually, an unforeseen pros and cons of this venture. But recently, I heard that some are asking that this action not be taken. They want Parklet and Pedlet to officially become an option for the business foregoing this test period. I hope the council's initial plan on this issue remains it will allow those business owners who are not aware of Parklets and Pedlets, as well as those who know, but certainly are unsure of their position, a chance to see what their effect will be. And perhaps during this testing year, existing businesses can be given an opportunity to express any comments they have. Who better than those on the street? The opinions of all business owners are important when it comes to something that will affect their businesses, not only now, but in the future. As for me, I am one of the unsure. I want to see them operate on a small scale first. Once they become an official part of the downtown plan, all aspects should be known. Also, this test year will allow the council to observe, take notes, and plan for any future actions on the downtown. In conclusion, there are pros and cons on the Parklets and Pedlets. As for the parking issue, the worst scenario for its lack in the downtown Kingman could be a future sign which reads "two-hour parking only," with parking officer out patrolling the streets for offenders. So, that, again, was just their observation when she called.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Ms. Schaefer, did you want Ms. Schaefer to...
I think this...
I should just see if there were questions?
Yeah, Sylvia's just...
Okay, well, thank you. Are there questions? Or, okay, counselor?
So, I just had a quick question, or I guess a comment. I used to build and demolish decks, not in that order, and...
That's pretty good.
I used to, so, I know that the elements can often take a toll on outdoor, you know, structures, so long as they're not maintained. And looking through the general guidelines, I see that there are enforcement measures in the event that someone violates one of the guidelines, which is good. But my question is, is there criteria to define what happens or who's to say, or when a structure gets into, you know, a state of, you know, disrepair? How do we address that? Who's in charge? I mean, I know that in, the city has been criticized in the past of people who take it upon themselves, or somebody who's been designed to be the arbiter of, you know, construction project wherein they're coming up with criteria that's arbitrary to fix. So, without like a defined plan of what constitutes, you know, a dilapidated state or disrepair, you know, it can be confusing for the people who are doing this, and also we want to make sure that it doesn't make downtown look bad after a couple of years or months of not being maintained or up...
I think we covered that pretty good in the guidelines, as far as the construction, the licensed contractor, the ability to work in the right of way and things like that. I think, Councilman, what might, what we probably should do then is during that period of the next year is what is going to be the implementation of the maintenance thing, where I think we have to have, it's in our public right of way, or in the town's public right of way, and I almost think we have to speak up on that behalf, is that, you know, on the maintenance piece. It certainly, I think, will fall to the owners, because the idea behind this was not to burden the city with constructing these, because it's a benefit to your business.
Right.
You know, or if you feel that way, then. So, I think that that would probably be something that we would have to, through probably the Building Department or the PED, make sure that we're addressing that maintenance issue. Because you're right, I mean, some of the new decking materials will last forever, but if it's...
Right.
...bit some of the woods, they have to be refinished.
Right, if it's composite board, it's going to last forever.
And the other thing is, I mean, it has to meet the ADA requirements. All those things have to come into play. So, I think that's where we have to kind of toe the line, you know? This is not just, you know, you get to throw this up tomorrow.
Well, if there's a way that we can help define what constitutes disrepair to the point where they have to, you know, make those repairs, because I can see that there could be a lot of confusion as to, you know, or anger against the city for requiring people to make repairs when they think that someone else's Parklet is in worse repair, or that they feel that it's adequate. I mean, we do have in the general guidelines, you know, the parameters of the structures. However, you know, I don't see a lot of criteria for upkeep, which I would love to see if we can add something, just because, you know, I think we need to define it, otherwise I can foresee a lot of angry people on both sides. People who don't support this program are going to start complaining about how...
The looks.
Yeah, how it looks, and then, you know, who's to say, who's to define when something is in disrepair, and what are the criteria that they're using, and is it arbitrary? So, is there any way we could like...
You know, I think that, you know, we certainly can add that to our list on the guidelines for the thing. I mean, it just, to me, it's like, we have another month to begin to still do some tweaking, you know, before we put this out.
Gary, if I could just jump in, the code, our code enforcement has the rules for dilapidated, has those defined, and so we do have the power in which, whether it's the Parklets-Pedlets program or someone's building, we have those rules in place, and we would use those in which to do enforcement. I think part of what you'll find in there is that we have committed and will continue to commit to do inspections and look at these on a regular basis to make sure people aren't going to get slivers, or they're not looking bad, or detracting from the downtown. So, I think we've got the rules in place that we would use, and so I would not want to rehash those. If we need to say something in the document that refers to that we...
Requirements for the...
For code, for code services requirements, we certainly can add that. There's no reason to create the rules twice, though, so.
Right. That makes sense.
Yep.
Counselor Nelson.
Thank you. One thing that I want to add on top of what David says is that we have a few, we've got our code enforcement, but we have a few businesses that have not necessarily followed the code. So, we want to make sure that we are keeping an eye on that. That is a concern of mine, of all of this. We've got one or two who just think that they just can do whatever they want. And the fear is that, of course, then we're going to have two more come in, because, well, if they got away with it, then we're going to get away with it, and then we'll have four more back here. So, as far as the code enforcement goes, we actually need to follow through with our code enforcement.
Well, and I would say, I would follow that up by saying that because these facilities are being built in our right of way and on our property, the ability to thumb your nose at the rules are going to become much, much harder. It's much different than just a building that's on someone's property. They're actually, we're actually allowing this to be on our property, which we're going to have the reason for more inspection and to be much more diligent is there.
And if I understand correctly, various team members from the city will inspect these Parklets and Pedlets prior to them being available to the public and approve them.
All the way along through the process, yes.
Any other questions? Yes, counselor.
Mayor and fellow counselors, and Gary, thanks for the report on this. Yes, I turned it on, sorry. Insurance, where does that fall into all this?
There's also an indemnification.
Okay.
Okay. And I think of everybody that we've talked to, the one people we haven't sat down with is risk management yet to work out that last little point either.
Okay.
Main thing was, were the folks downtown comfortable, was everything else in place?
And I can jump in this. We've done this in the past with these types of encroachments, where you do get the additional insured and add the city to it, as well as the indemnification clauses that we always add to everything to help protect the city. Okay. And I just don't think we have the specific numbers hammered out, I'm guessing is what it is, but this is a process we've been through in the past for these...
We'll make note and make sure we're following that guideline.
Any other questions, comments?
I would have one question, just to confirm. A business that's interested in this, the Parklet can be between one and three parking spaces, is that correct? In length? So, the entire range of the business, okay. Okay, thank you.
With a two-foot buffer on each side.
Right, yeah, right. Okay.
But I think the most important thing is that we will have to, as responsibly as the city, as Mr. Foggins said, we have to stay on top of this. When they're in, it has to look nice downtown. It cannot be allowed to deteriorate. You know, it's beneficial to the business, but it's also, you know, Beale's our gateway, so we can't, it can't turn into something crappy. It just can't.
Counselor Nelson.
Just a quick thank you. You guys have put your heart and soul into this and worked your butts off. Thank you so much. It has not gone unnoticed. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Counsel, I would entertain a motion on the approval of the City of Kingman Parklet-Pedlet program.
I move that we approve the Parklet-Pedlet program.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's been a motion and second to approve the Parklet-Pedlet program. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to discuss one thing. Would that be without a city-induced cap? Because I think if you were to leave it to the private market, you might only get one to three Parklets anyways, if you just leave it to the private sector to decide who wants to do one.
I think as we looked at this...
The policy has no caps.
Thank you, sir.
The cap is not in there.
No discussion.
Any further discussion?
Just a real quick question. They discussed the possibility of making certain tweaks. Would they have to be made prior to voting on this issue, or is that something that they... I mean...
I think there's something that we could do, which is we could vote on this motion as amended to include the tweaks for the maintenance, because we discussed that we're going to reference the existing codes, just to put that in there. And so, I think that would cover it, unless there are other things we want to... And so I think that would cover it unless there are other things we want to address because the way I see it, this policy can come back to us as other things are, if other things are identified that need to be added.
Any substantial changes would come back to you. We'd appreciate the opportunity to make little course changes as needed, but anything that was substantial would definitely come back to the council.
Yeah, so I think that would be the way to handle that. Just amend it, yeah, to include the maintenance codes, reference to the maintenance.
Right, okay, so I'd like to amend my motion to approve the city parklet-pedlet program to include the maintenance program that we had discussed and of course, the insurance requirements as well.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve an amended motion that approves the parklet-pedlet program and references maintenance codes and addresses liability and insurance issues. And we've had the motion and second, so without further discussion, I would call for the vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. New business, consideration of a request for a sewer variance at 1704 Florence Avenue from Benetti Builders LLC, Engineering 19-0084. Greg Benetti of Benetti Builders LLC has submitted this request for a sewer variance for development of a single-family home at 1704 Florence Avenue. Staff has advised the applicant that based on Section 7.2, of something, there should be a sewer line extension across the Western Avenue frontage of the property. On October 24th, 2019, the Municipal Utility Commission reviewed this request and recommended denial of the variance by a 5-0 vote and staff recommends denial. Mr. Henry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. If I may, I'd like to start kind of in almost reverse order here, starting with the rule. The rule is what brings this here tonight and we're talking specifically about Rule 7.2A2 in the City of Kingman utility regulations. And I'd just like to kind of go over what this rule means and how we've applied it before we get into talking about 1704 Florence Avenue. So the rule states, "A public water or sewer extension shall be required to extend across the total frontage of the property to be served." And in the case of a corner lot, we consider the total frontage to be both sides of that corner lot. Frontage is anything that fronts City of Kingman right of way or street. It goes on to say, "In instances where due to topography, location, or surroundings, the engineering design shows that the water sewer line cannot be extended further to serve additional properties, then the city engineer may allow the developer to end the line without crossing the total frontage." So as this request came in a couple of months ago now, and it was reviewed by first our assistant engineers and then by myself, it was determined that there were additional properties that could benefit from the sewer line extension, in this case, in Western Avenue, and I'll get into the details of that. It further says, Item 2A, and I have it highlighted, that the line must be constructed to provide for any extensions to property that can be developed. And that again goes to what I just said, that we do feel there is property that can be developed. And then there's Item D that says, "Any developer who is dissatisfied with a decision under this paragraph may appeal to council." So that is, in essence, the rule and we'll talk about how it's applied here to 1704 Florence Avenue. This first map is just kind of a general vicinity map just showing the location of the property. We're located essentially at the intersection of Western Avenue and Florence Avenue, west of Stockton Hill Road, north of the cemetery, and east of the golf course. This next map shows a little more detail and is the one that I would probably concentrate on the most here. So the property in question, 1704, is also known as Parcel 31114151. It's highlighted in, with a red rectangle there on the map. The green line in Florence Avenue is an existing eight-inch sewer line. It does extend across the Florence frontage of Parcel 151, 1704 Florence. But there's no sewer line in Western Avenue. So that's where we apply the total frontage. That's where the determination came in that, okay, we have, we may have sewer on one frontage, but our Rule 7.2 states that it has to be across the total frontage and so staff made a determination that this dash line that you see on the map in Western Avenue should be made across the frontage of the property in Western Avenue. Immediately south of Parcel 151 is Parcel 31114154. They are essentially uphill from that proposed sewer extension that I have labeled sewer extension required by the regulations. So they would be a potential benefit to having that sewer line extension in Western Avenue. There's a three-acre property on the west side of Western Avenue that is currently vacant and they are also uphill from that sewer extension and could potentially one day connect into that sewer line and benefit from that as well. And his, the applicant is Greg Benetti. He's wanting to build a single-family house and just connect into the existing line that's in Florence. So he has submitted an application that went through the Utility Commission and he's provided some reasons in there for why he feels the extension should not be made. One of them is that he mentions, and it's bullet three on the letter here, that all sewer hookups are required to come from LaSalle Street, West Lucille. So what he's talking about is the, going back to the map here, so Lucille is the street immediately south of Florence and there is an existing sewer line at the intersection of Lucille and LaSalle, but the issue with the property Parcel 31114154 is they are more than 500 feet away from that sewer line, existing sewer line. So according to our rule, when you're 500 feet away, you don't have to do the extension. And in this case, the sewer line to the north is more or less 120 feet from their property, so they would be looking to go from the north and make this extension in Western Avenue anyway, if that parcel were to develop prior to someone else extending the sewer line in Lucille. Is that relatively clear? Okay. So the contention that the applicant has is that he feels there's no additional properties that would benefit or it may take too long. And again, the rule is pretty clear. It just states that when you develop, you bring it across to your frontage and if there's properties that are there that can benefit, then that's the rule. And that's the reason we're here tonight because the applicant has requested an appeal to that. It did go through the Utility Commission and the Utility Commission voted five to oh to recommend denial of the request. I just, there's some comments from staff. This is from our planning department, Rich Ruggles. He indicated that he feels there's property that would benefit and that the extension should be made. We also received a, one of the owners of the property on the west side of Western was in the office and had concerns that if the sewer line extension were not made, that he would have to do that and his property would not benefit. And he's asked, he also asked that the city follow the rule and deny the request for That's in essence, the information. I did include the, I asked Melinda to provide a copy of the minutes from the Municipal Utility Commission meeting. I didn't have those at the time I submitted the write-up, but it was just a simple, one double-sided page and I highlighted in yellow the essence of the commission and they did find that they, that were, there were properties that would benefit from the extension. They were also concerned about if it were approved, that it could set a precedence and that was their main reason. So they voted to recommend denial, which in essence would require the sewer extension in Western Avenue. I do know Mr. Benetti is here. I did receive a report from Mr. Benetti yesterday and I understand this is handed out. I will probably let Mr. Benetti explain this report. I am not seeing much in here that would refute the fact that there are properties uphill that would benefit and there is some information on costs. It looks like he has obtained some costs from a contractor to extend sewer there. So with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Are there questions for Mr. Henry?
I would have one, Madam Mayor, if I could. Greg, in the minutes, I'm looking at the bottom of the page and in your testimony to the Municipal Utilities Commission, there's a small sentence that says a payback for sewer extension would be available. Could you explain that a little bit?
Yes, sir. So our utility regulations allow for a, in this case, if this extension is made on Western Avenue, then any properties that would benefit from that extension could be included in a payback. And what, once the line were constructed, the developer is then asked if he wishes to pursue a payback and in which case, he's given a timeframe to provide his certified cost for the design and the construction of that water or sewer extension. And in this case, we're talking sewer, but it's also allowed for water. And then the city creates an agreement. We prorate the costs based on the total frontage of all the properties that benefit and it gets computed on a per foot basis and then it's recorded and then that payback is good for 20 years. It's collected at the time the vacant lot develops and connects. So if they don't develop within that 20-year timeframe, then the city would never collect the payback. And we do them for city projects, too. We do them for both city and private development and we track those.
Is that payback prorated based on the frontage of each property?
Yes, ma'am. So we would compute the total frontage and have the total cost and from there, we would come up with a cost per foot and then we would look at the individual frontages of the properties that benefit and come up with a total cost for each individual property.
Yes, Counselor Watkins.
Greg, just for clarification on your, on this picture, the blue and purple lines are water lines that are on there?
The blue lines are. The purple are just my leader arrows mostly
Okay.
Yeah, from where I'm trying to point out, you know, subject lot, I've just got a leader arrow there that points to that lot.
Right.
And there's a yellow one here that, they're color-coded based on size.
It is interesting to note that the sewer goes down the center of that on Florence, but then when you look at Lucille-Pasadena, it comes off of LaSalle and goes down the backside of the lots on that one.
There, the strange thing about Golden Gate Addition subdivision is some of the blocks have alleys and some of them do not.
Okay.
So the one south of Lucille has an alley and the developer chose to bring the sewer line up the alley.
And those developers benefited with that lot, but that's just luck of the draw really, the way that was because of that alley design?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, if I'm looking at this map and I'm looking at the alley between Lucille and Pasadena, that does have, it has sewer down to Western, but it didn't turn the corner when that house was built. And then when I look between Florence and Robinson and I see the sewer running east-west down those streets, but I don't see that they turned the corner at any corner to require this extension.
So
And so how did all of that development happen without this ordinance being enforced?
So the one, I can address Lucille first, the one with the sewer line in the alley. So they developed on the north side of the alley and there's no, the grade of the sewer has to go with the grade of land essentially.
Right.
So in order for gravity
Gravity flow.
Yeah. So the reason this corner lot here, which is under my note, which I might be able to move, move it out of the way there so we can see this house, they did not extend a sewer line in Western because of the grade, because of the topography. So that exception where topography allows a city engineer to say, okay, there's no reason to extend sewer there. We do require that sewers be a minimum of three feet deep and the slope of Western would be going opposite the slope of the sewer in that case. And I don't, I can pull up our GIS on here, but I would surmise the same question, the same answer would be for the other ones that were mentioned to the north there, in particular the one on Florence. The reason they did not extend a sewer line north is again, it goes against the grade.
And so this section of Western is the only section in this whole strip that meets that three-foot requirement?
This section, this particular section, and there is a sewer line further north in Western that goes
Right, up above Gates.
This one would not only, it not only meets the three-foot, but the three-foot depth requirement, but it also meets the requirement, there's a two-foot separation or two-foot elevation difference from the south to the north there of that particular lot.
Madam Mayor, thanks. Greg, just for, because infill is happening all over the city and it's a great thing. What is the plans for those lots on Lucille on the north side there where there is no sewer? What's gonna happen there?
So
What is the plan for the city, I guess?
So they, the lots on the north side of Lucille would extend one, there's an existing sewer line at LaSalle and Lucille. They would extend that from the east to the west.
Okay, so theoretically, that end corner lot there on Western and Lucille, that northeast corner, that would actually benefit from that sewer being there, too.
Yes.
So it really wouldn't benefit from having the one on Western?
Well, unless they develop before that sewer line is extended
Correct, yes, but just seeing, sort of seeing the natural development of where it's going, right?
Right.
Because if the sewer were to come half the block on Lucille and someone were to develop that northwest portion of that lot on the corner there of Lucille, they're gonna go, they're gonna extend sewer for the shortest distance they have to.
Mm-hmm.
So in this case, they're looking at about 120 feet to the north versus currently over 500 feet now, so.
Correct. Okay, thanks.
But all of those lots on Lucille are still vacant?
I can, I, let me, well, let me go back to our overall
I mean, there's a very clear pattern of east-west sewer flow here because we know the slope from Western to Stockton Hill is downhill.
Yeah, the lots on the north side of Lucille are all vacant. This map photo was, I believe, about three years old, but anyone who were to develop there, the water and sewer information should be up to date. So anyone who would have developed there would have to extend sewer if they're within 500 feet.
They would have to extend it down Lucille towards Stockton Hill?
Well, yes, they, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, I thought we were talking a different block, but yes, they would either extend it from, likely extend it from this manhole here, which would be a better way to extend, given the slope of the land. So they would extend from Stockton Hill towards LaSalle.
So in the fullness of time, that is going to be an east-west sewer down Lucille?
Yeah, and if this other block here between Western and LaSalle develops, they will extend from LaSalle and Lucille to the west. But again, except for this, this lot on the very end, who's, these are 600-foot blocks, so he's more than 500 feet away.
Really, the benefit Really, the benefit is to that really, that lot right adjacent, because across the street is, the topography is questionable, but I won't even guess that whether it gets developed or not, but, okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. We have two people signed up to speak. And the first one is Mr. Benetti, Greg Benetti, representing Jeremy Benetti.
This is a letter from my engineer on the design of the plan for the sewer. And I've got, as in that former pamphlet, I believe I gave you a list of the potential costs, the sewer line. And we're estimating it right now at about $35,000 to $45,000 to be compliant with what the city's requiring of us. And the reason it's at the price level that it's at is because that's a hard dig area. So, I mean, we're going to hit hard cliche in there in order to be compliant. So they're going to, we're, all the bid that we got so far are not hardcore contract costs. There's a lot of costs in there that are not included because of the anomalies that might occur during the construction process. So if this sewer line was extended, it's our argument that the paybacks, which will only be two potential sewer taps on 152-foot line, well, it's only going to be two people are going to be able to ever tap into that sewer line. After the cleanout on the end of the line farthest south, that line will be making light. So nobody will ever be able to use that line. So it's only going to benefit two sewer taps. Now, the payback's on $45,000 sewer extension. I mean, you, obviously, we don't all do the math. It's going to be 20 grand. So, and then the other course, my conversation here is, be upfront with the council. This project's over, as far as I'm concerned. It does not pencil. We can't make sense out of it. It has too too many numbers that are just through the ceiling. We can't make money on this thing. It's not there. The numbers are just not there. So if you, council approves this, this is DOA. It's just dead. We can't do anything with it. But I'll try to re-cover the bases of our argument here a little bit. The property of 170 Florence is a small 5,000-square-foot lot building. And will, the building will require entry-level housing in this area with the city sewer requirement. Hard sewer costs estimated conservatively at 45,000, 40,000 to 35,000. The market for a home built on the entry-level lot can't reconcile the added expense to justify the construction of the 170 Florence Street home. Council doesn't allow the variance of the sewer extension. Nothing can materialize concerning the construction of the entry-level home. The bid I have exampled on the paperwork don't include hard digging costs, as this area simply is characteristic of the problem of added extreme hard dig factor. Hypothetically, if the sewer was extended, the payback for the only two lots potentially to be able to access the sewer would be 20,000 payback for the sewer. That's our estimate. I don't know how they do their formula. They might, it might be different if they consider the frontage of my property or my client's property. It's not mine, it's a client. But we don't need a sewer extension. We have sewer and water in the front of the lot, 1704 Florence. We have no viable interest in a sewer extension there. It's already in front of the property at 1704 Florence. The hard costs of the construction costs would be excessive, and again, it would never happen. Nobody's going to tap into them with them high potential payback fees if the city allows that. It'd only serve the two lots, and the sewer line would be making light, and in the further future, sewer taps would not be functional, resulting in the city's added maintenance costs for generations. And the following homes built that were never required to extend the sewer on the on Western are the following addresses. There's 1070 Gates, or 1702 Robinson Street, 1703 Florence Street, across from our 1704 Florence and 1706 Lucille. The last two properties have, that were built were 2008 and 1706 Lucille, built 2016. The question I ask, why are we insisted to be compliance to the city's ordinance when we've allowed these other exemptions? These are infill areas. And what the city did by our gone generation, 30 years ago, in the city, in the city of Kingman, they had a hydrant fee, a fire hydrant fee. I think this is a lot more reasonable. City should look at my proposal. That was used to also, in areas as this, instead of placing excessive financial burden on a single property owner, the cost could be successful in incentivizing growth and thus work for our grandparents, and it worked effectively, and it would work effectively in our day. I simply conclude my argument that 1704 Florence cannot be penciled to make sense. Sewers in this area run east-west on all streets on the west side of Stockton Hill Road. The narrative by the city engineering department is clearly fictional, to think anyone will ever tap into the sewer line. The cost is just too prohibitive for anyone wanting to tap into the sewer line, besides the fact that the only two taps could ever utilize the sewer line. It would be natural, under these set of circumstances, for the owners of these lots to tap into the streets running east-west as the sewer flows. Good governance, as our constitution represents, is the smallest footprint in our citizens' lives and allows us the most freedoms for all of us to prosper and let the markets allow all of us lower prices. I thank you for allowing me your time to consider my argument.
Thank you, Mr. Benetti.
You have any questions?
Do you have any questions for Mr. Benetti? Okay, the next speaker, no questions.
Next speaker?
The next speaker is Mr. Ted Parks.
I live over in that area, and I developed a couple lots up there on Western, north of there. And I'm just concerned that Mr. Benetti's going to be put out of business on building on that on that lot. He can't do anything with that lot. If he has to put that sewer line in there, he just won't pencil out at all, so he's going to be out of business. Somebody talked about precedents going to be set. There's four houses along there that the city has allowed to build, right along Western on those corner lots. They weren't required to put a sewer line in there. I don't think it's fair for Mr. Benetti to have to build a sewer line in there when nobody else has had to. Those other lots in there, this ordinance has made those other lots worthless. They can't be developed, they can't be built on, they're worthless. And I don't think that is fair for Mr. Benetti. He's a citizen, he's a taxpayer. Why he has to build a sewer line for the city, which nobody's going to benefit from? I just don't think it is fair at all. Somebody mentioned infill. As you know, the Growing Smarter 2020 provides for, promotes infill. This ordinance is frustrating infill. Those lots can't be built on with this ordinance. So I've just asked that you grant this variance so that he can build the house there and pay all the fees that the city gets, you know, building permits and all these different fees. It's going to create jobs, it's going to generate revenue for the city when he builds that house. And just let him build that house. And the guy across the street there has that three acres, the developer or whatever he is, wants that sewer line built by Mr. Benetti. He wants to benefit from Mr. Benetti's sewer line, which he has to pay for. I don't think that's fair either. I think the developer should build that sewer line, or somebody who's going to actually use it should build it. So I'd ask you to give the, grant that variance. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Parks? Thank you very much. Is there any further request to speak with any of the staff on this?
I'd like to ask Greg a question. Greg, I appreciate that there's a mechanism for repayment, but I guess what I don't understand is, if you want to build on a parcel that isn't currently served by City Water and Sewer Service, why isn't it a cost of development for that individual to bring it to their property as a part of the whole development? Because in this situation, you're asking somebody that already has the service to put out money on a speculative basis, and you don't even know when that's going to be developed or if it ever will be. Why not just wait and say, okay, you want to build on that corner lot, you want to build on the other side of the street? Guess what? You don't have water and sewer there right now, so that's a cost of development for your project to bring it to your site. That seems a lot more fair to me. I know our ordinance or regulations don't say that, but it just seems more common sense. I mean, we're, you're still on dirt roads here. I don't understand how that's possible, but.
Yeah.
There's a lot of those. I don't get it.
Thank you. I would echo that, because this is all, these are all dirt, none of these roads meet our standards for street construction.
No, Western's paved, but it doesn't.
Western is, but all these other new houses have been built without any improvements. Now, I think government does play a role in this, but we, I think the government kind of missed the boat on letting these houses be built at all with no street improvements. And I know it was grandfathered in, and we now have a mechanism to prevent that from ever happening again. But when I drove this area today, and I know it pretty well, I cringe because there's no standards at all for these streets. But when I got to Western, and I, it's very clear how the slope goes there, you know, it goes, it does go from west to east, and there's a little elevation from south downward, from south to north. But mostly, I looked at this and saw just what the vice mayor was saying, nobody else had to do it in that whole area. And this site over here, these lots don't look developable without great cost. And so you're really down to just one site there that might benefit in the future if they develop. And I could be wrong, those other sites could. But when I look at this property between Florence and Robinson, and they built with no extensions, and there's vacant lots across the street, I'm like, there, it looks like the precedents have already been set in that area. And and we need housing in Kingman, Arizona. So not that I feel good about this development at all because of these streets. I don't think I'll ever feel good until we have an improvement district there. But but I am having a hard time with the logic of just this one, one house, one lot following, not getting a variance.
And that's my question.
We have variances for a reason.
Greg, that's my question. Why isn't it, if you're going to develop, you're a developer and you're going to develop on a property that isn't currently served by Municipal Utilities, why isn't it a cost of development for that person at that time? I don't understand.
Well, the cost to get the utilities there to serve that development has to be borne by someone.
Right.
In this case, we're talking subdivisions.
But wouldn't it be more fair, quote unquote, to be borne by the person that's actually bringing the development?
I would jump in and just say that the fairness in the policy is that it allows the council to grant variance.
Okay.
That's your fairness.
Appreciate it. That's a good answer.
I agree. That is the fairness. And I also think that, if I heard you right, in due course, as these infill happens, that there will be sewer all the way down east-west on Lucille as those houses develop.
Yes.
And my question is, can those properties across Western to the west, which I, you know, I looked at today, that one has a big hill on it, and one of them, you know, they're going to be very expensive to develop. But if that is true, could they hook in to the future development on Lucille?
I would say part of the property could, but likely the property to the north would have to go to the Florence sewer at that point. Because the ground is essentially sloping, as you stated.
Oh, yeah, it is.
From south to north.
Yes, it would have to go to Florence, which it already has started, but will just continue down.
Yeah, perhaps the the bottom half of that parcel 206 could connect to the extension in Lucille as that occurs, as they develop.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
One was the last house developed? Tell me that again. Was it 2016, you said, in that area? What was the last house built there on our dirt roads?
I do not know exactly when the last.
So what you're telling me here is that if we offer a variance on this, we could potentially be offering a variance on every other development that happens there, because we've already got dirt roads that we gave away a variance for, and now we're going to give away a sewer variance. So at this stage of the game, why don't we just look at everybody that wants to develop there and say, it's free-for-all, just go for it? Because that's kind of what we're saying right now, is it's a free-for-all. If we don't start setting the rules and establishing the rules, who's going to stick to them? That's my question.
Well, we have the rule, and I think it's fairly clear.
But is it not true that we have the rule, we have the fairness issue for variances, too?
Yep.
And I don't see a free-for-all. I see east-west sewers, sewer flows that are going to happen regardless of whether we do this on Western or not. Those have to be developed for the houses that are going to be built there. And if I'm understanding you correctly, am I?
On Lucille, yes. When the houses on the north side of Lucille develop, they will have to extend the sewer from LaSalle to the west.
On Florence, they will have to extend it?
Yes. If we're talking the block between LaSalle and Stockton Hill Road, yes.
Yes. And all of these are going to have to be extended. There's just no, that's the gravity flow.
Correct.
And so this seems like an exception to me, not a free-for-all. It seems like an exception to sewer on Western, because there is no sewer on Western around it. Now, I see sewer on Western starting above Gates.
Correct.
And I see development on the on the west of that area. So I guess they all tied in there.
Yeah.
But that's a different topography than what we're looking at at this section.
Well, it's still sloping generally from south to north, north of Gates as well. The sewer, the sewer in Western flows to the north.
But I mean, the topography on the west toward the golf course there is not the same as the topography I'm seeing up here further south.
Yes, so parcel 206 does have a interesting variation in topography.
A very interesting variation.
If I may, just offer this. So, we talked a little bit about this sewer line extension in the alley here, south of LaSalle. If that sewer line extension had been made in Lucille, he would, this house on the corner would have been required to, to bring it south in Western Avenue. I mean, he chose, he essentially did that, he did it on the east side in LaSalle, he brought it all the way south across his frontage there. There's, there's no reason to go north because the sewer is going to be coming out of the ground by the time it gets to the end of his lot. So that's, that's again, the reason why these lots, some of these lots don't have extensions for sewer line on, on north. But again, if he had come from Lucille over, that you, we would likely see on our map here today, unless the variance had been granted, a sewer line extension on Western Avenue. Because it does look like there are properties to the south that would benefit from having that sewer line there, Western Avenue.
You're talking about the big house on, uh, Lucille?
Correct.
On the corner?
Yeah.
Very big house.
Yes.
Yeah. And, and they did not, and they did not round the corner.
Well, had, had they brought the sewer line in Lucille Avenue, and they chose to bring it in the alley, that was, that was their decision, they would have had to make that extension in Western Avenue across that frontage in that, in that case, because the sewer line would have been going with the slope of the land at that point. I mean, they essentially did the same thing, they, they, they brought it the same distance in LaSalle at that point and then brought it up the alley.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
But that, but that's the reason.
Now it exists all the way across LaSalle, yeah.
But that's, that's the reason why they didn't go north and western.
But however, having said that, our ordinance would still require it.
Unless due to topography, in this case, the topography allowed the city engineer to say, well, there's no reason to do that. We wouldn't want to, if there's no benefit, if there's no one that can use the sewer and if we're not going to make that three foot of depth of cover, then they're allowed to not make the extension at that point. And that's, that's something that's.
The same house that is now under question, the same lot could have been served going north as you're now talking about going south. Anyway, um, interesting scenario, thank you. Yeah, oh, councillor, please.
Greg Staley.
Yes.
Thank you. Some other comments? Seventeen oh three, across the seventy, most seventy. Of course, they're hooked on the sewer because of topography, it made sense for them to hook on that exit. It would not have made sense for fire to go around the corner. No sewer down west.
Well, the fact that there's no sewer there, it doesn't, is sort of irrelevant. It's whether that, is whether they needed to do that extension to one, benefit someone and whether they can do it due to topography. So that's why seventeen oh three did not go north as well.
And then, and then, you know, we were talking about Lucille, those lots in between Lucille and Western. Because of topography, which way is the sewer going to flow that? Going to flow down to the south?
Yes.
Always, not even from that corner lot?
Yes.
On Western.
Yes.
Just to clarify.
Yeah. Unless, like I, like I attempted to explain earlier, the corner lot on the north side of Lucille is going to go to the shortest point.
If we don't, if we don't grant the variance, then they would go to the shorter, and they would hook up on West.
They'll still likely hook up on, uh, do that extension in Western if they develop first because they're outside the 500 feet and it's still shorter to go the 120 feet to the north there, so.
If that happened, and that property that decided to develop, could they apply for a payback from, uh, Mr. Benetti?
They could. Um, payback is only collected at the time of building permit, so if, if this house is built already, it's, it's very likely.
He doesn't need it.
We would include it in the payback, but it's very likely that the payback would never be realized at that point because
Okay.
Once they're built, they're, they're built.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Benetti.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, I think we've had a vibrant discussion. At this point, I would entertain a motion, discretion of council, to either, um, deny the variance or approve the variance.
Mayor, I move that we deny the variance.
I have a motion to deny the variance. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, to deny the variance. Is there any further discussion? Okay, uh, then I'll call for the vote. Uh, we have a motion to deny the variance for, um, seventeen oh four Florence Avenue. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Did you know, did you get that? Which, which way did it go?
The motion failed.
Do we need a, do we need a roll call vote?
The motion failed.
Oh, the motion failed. So the variance is approved.
No, you'd have to have another motion.
Oh, okay, the motion approved. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the variance.
I'll make the motion. I think that, um, when you look at all the vacant lots and the, and the gravity, the topography, that you're going to, if they're going to be developed, you're going to have sewer service there eventually. It's just going to be borne by the people that are actually building on those properties. So I would make a motion to approve this variance.
I have a motion to approve the variance. Is there a second?
I second it.
Motion, a second, approve the variance. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Ayes have it. Motion carries. City clerk has all the corrective, okay, as long as you have it. Um, okay, the next order of business is the approval of engineering agreement, FAA Grant Runway three dash twenty-one. The City of Kingman applied to the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, and the Arizona Department of Transportation, ADOT, for grant assistance to design and rehabilitate the main runway oh three, three twenty-one at the airport. The total estimated project cost is $2,600,000. It is anticipated that the FAA will provide 91.06% or $2,367,560 of the project cost through a grant provided under the Airport Improvement Program. The remaining portion of the project cost will be equally divided between ADOT and the city, with each contributing 4.47% or $116,220. Staff recommends approval of, one, the, to issue the notice to proceed with CNS engineers for the order agreement to, in the amount of $125,756, and two, to authorize the city manager to execute grant agreements on behalf of the city as outlined with the city matching funds not to exceed $116,220. Good evening, Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As you've probably seen in the newspaper, the FAA has offered us 2.3 million dollars. So those numbers, and I apologize for this, have changed since I wrote the report. The offer came in after the fact, so I'm going to revise the numbers just a wee bit. Again, these are supplemental grant funds, 91.06% from the FAA, 4.47% from ADOT, and then 4.7, 4.47, local. And again, that's airport enterprise funds that we're using, that will be using for this. Uh, and again, these funds are coming from ticket taxes for airliners, any of us that fly on airliners, that's part of it, and aviation fuel, uh, taxes as well. So there's no, other than the airport enterprise funds, there's no local tax money going into this. So those numbers, and again, I apologize, realized this afternoon that it wasn't 2.6, it was 2.3. So the total grant number is 2,525,807. The FAA portion of this, again, is 2.3 million. And then the ADOT match is 112,904, and the local match is going to be the same, 112,904. And again, my apologies on this. You'll note detachments here, the, uh, Engineering Design Task Agreement for the project, uh, Cost Work Summary that outlines the, the price for the project and the breakdowns, and then an email, a congratulatory email from FAA, basically, that showed up a couple days ago. So enough of me talking, any questions?
Are there any questions regarding this very good news? Yes. Councillor Staley.
This is very good news. Um, you, you know, first, I, I want to make it clear for maybe anybody that doesn't understand that, um, the airport is under certain rules, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the money that is made from land sales must go back into improvements in the airport. Yes, and this is, all that money is kept separate from city funds and sales tax, it is just in there for improvements to keep our airport operating properly. And this is also part of $22 million over five years, is that right? We have a five-year improvement plan that's in place, and it totals about 22 million?
Um, your memory's better than mine, but yes, it's somewhere in that range, yes.
This is just, this is this first year's project because it's very important and needed, and this is the runway that has the very large crack in it that we saw during Air Fest that was tried to patch, but it needs, it needs to be completely redone.
And the, the pavement, and I, I forgot to mention, uh, Mr. Lance McIntosh, who's the managing engineer at CNS, came up for this. The pavement condition index on the runway has reached a point where, um, the pavement needs to be replaced. So, as you alluded to, there's, there's a basis for this. It's not just, oh, we want new pavement because it's fun and nice, it's because it's meeting its design life, it needs to be replaced.
Right. And we could argue that that's probably because there hasn't been a lot of maintenance done to that runway over the last 10 years.
Um, that's part of it. Part of it is, um, just the nature of the climate and the area that we live in, and pavement has a really rough time of it.
Sure, okay. So, um, that's all. I'm, I'm very happy to see these improvements, uh, happening to our airport. They're important, and they're important to the future growth, so, thank you, Stephen.
Any other comments or questions? No. Well, I'd just like to thank you and thank you for the diligent work that's being done on behalf of the city out at the airport and, and, um, very glad to see these improvements. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next order of business, department reports.
We need a vote.
Oh, sorry, shoot, I just, it's a done deal in my mind. I don't think we're going to debate this one. Okay, um, so.
I'll make up.
Could I have a, uh, a motion to approve engineering agreement FAA Grant Runway three twenty-one?
I approve, I move that we approve the engineering agreement, uh, FAA for Grant Runway three dash two one.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve engineering agreement FAA Grant Runway three dash two one. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it unanimously, thank you. The next order of business will be department reports, and we're going to have an update on the Northern Arizona Consolidated Fire District, number one, Management Service Agreement update.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you. Uh, as you recall, um, several months ago, we entered into an agreement to, um, provide leadership or management of NACFED, and as we've progressed, um, over, a little over a quarter, uh, into the agreement, thought that it would be appropriate to just bring you up to speed on the activities and what, what's, how it's been going and, and, you know, is, is the program working? And so, in doing so, I sat down and talked with Chief Rhodes and asked if this would be the appropriate time to, do we have enough kind of water under the bridge to, to share with the council? And he assured me that there's been a lot of activity, and that this would actually be a great time to share how it's going. So I've asked him to kind of walk you through the, let's just say, the first quarter of our experience, it's been a little bit more than a quarter, but the, the first quarter, just to show you and tell you kind of what, what we're accomplishing. So I've asked him to, to walk you through that. So Chief, if you wouldn't mind.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Chief Rhodes.
Good evening, I'm sorry, I, as a, I used to play college baseball, and me and the city manager need to work on our base stealing signs really quick on this, uh, that's okay. The guys at the back want to know if I want their help, and absolutely not, so, um, no, not, not their help, no. So good evening, uh, I'll keep this very brief. Um, as you know, we, uh, started the Management Service Agreement in August, August 6th, um, and jumped right into it because that very weekend, that very Saturday evening, even before the ink was dry, um, out there, there was a, uh, two-vehicle accident with two of our engines, um, which is kind of the epitome of, of this entire thing. One engine back to another, fifty-seven thousand dollars worth of damage, et cetera, et cetera. So, takes a couple of units out of service, but my point to that is, that's why we're doing what we're doing. And, and I'll kind of get into that in, in a couple slides. So I will keep this pretty brief, um, just a bit, uh, an overview of, of what we just took on, and that is nine fire stations, uh, daily staffing of only seven, and I'll tell you why in a second. Um, 25 full-time members, 15 part-time, eight volunteers. You can see kind of, uh, on the slide, uh, we have a lot of apparatus, and there's a reason for that. Um, we've decreased in size at NACFED quite substantially. Uh, if you look at 69 square miles, that doesn't seem like a lot, but we can't consider road miles. And I'll give you an example, two examples. Station 33, if you know where Gaming Fish is, out on North Stockton Hill Road, um, we cover chloride. That is the first due station for chloride. So if you think about how they have to get, they, we don't have a helicopter in NACFED, it would be amazing if we did, uh, or something to shoot over the, over the mountains there. We have to come down, all the way down Stockton, hit 40 and come all the way back up, so you can imagine what kind of response time that is. So thank goodness we have good partners, we've been able to advance some mutual aid, automatic aid through that. Um, the other, uh, disadvantage or mileage that we got to think about is from, uh, the edge of town, Thinkwe're Bulldog and the recycling and all that is, through Valley Vista all the way to Truckston. So think about road distance, that's really what we're covering. So we can't really take 69 square miles as face value. Um, it is a lot of travel time. And having driven that a couple times now in the last couple of months, um, it's, it's an interesting trek. Pretty, but if you're responding to an incident, um, you don't have time for that. So, so our focus coming in has been stabilization. Stabilization of things such as training, safety, and all those things that we really, really focused on coming in, and that's really the emphasis. Our expectations, I use the analogy of pulling the sheet across the bed. Um, we have Kingman and what we do, and, uh, I'd say, uh, with my assistant chiefs in the back that we're kind of spoiled in some of the things we, we get, our battalion chiefs and, and the calls that we make, our, our emergency response and customer service, uh, have become second nature. Uh, I can't brag on them enough, we had, um, engineer testing this week, and I told all the candidates that were in there, we didn't have to go through this entire process. I could have picked any one of them out of a hat, and they would have been great picks, they could all do the job, and, and that's kind of a, a testament to the last five years of what we've put in place. So our expectation is to pull that the rest of the way across, uh, that sheet across the rest of the bed. Limitations, they have a 5.3 million dollar budget, uh, their tax valuation is 3.12. Uh, by state, uh, state, uh, legislation, we can only do a 3.25. So with that, what it doesn't tell is that 40% reduction in assessed valuations since 2012. That's also misleading because part of that, part of that budget's also grants and some unassigned capital. So I say 40%, their budget's down about 58% in the last 10 to 12 years. So you can imagine the manpower, I talked, nine staff stations, right now with seven personnel, I'm staffing, uh, really four, but the fourth station is a one-man station that's out of service more than it's in service, which is a challenge, and that's Station 33, the one that responds to chloride, which brings some challenges, brings some challenges. So, we've been busy, but again, a, a quick overview, uh, of them, and on this, on this entire sheet here of data, what I didn't break down was calls by district, okay? The three main stations that we have is Station 30, 31, which is up on northern, Station 32, which is out by the airport, Station 35 out in Valley Vista. Those are our three main stations. The two main stations, 31 and 32, take up about 84 to 86% of the calls. They're in town. So Valley Vista's the next, and, uh, Station 35 is not nearly as busy. But you can see, they run about 350 to 420, 417 is what it has here, uh, that's before and after we took over. One significant thing here, and I'll focus on two things, think about the land mass, think, think about travel distance. Just in the last few months, if you go to the, the far right two columns, um, you can see that, uh, the turnout times, which is the time from the station gets notified till they get on the trucks and go, uh, was it 36%? No, we're 52%. I'll take a 16% increase in four months, any day of the week. Any day of the week, that is fantastic because that's what we control, which directly affects. which directly affects travel time, which if you look at the travel response times down there, we've made anywhere from a 21% jump to a 7% jump, depending on the type of calls and the total response time. So that is getting out the door, knowing our job better, being more efficient, more effective. So in a short amount of time, that's just by talking, that's by laying expectations and holding accountability. Management focus here, these things didn't exist. I, I hate to say that in any other way, but standing operator, operating procedures did not exist. Payroll, things like that, that we've had to step in and, and address. We did time cards, written hand time cards, which is a, a severe liability. It's a checks and balance that just wasn't there, so we've instituted some methods. We actually had a financial audit, which I'll talk about in a second. Even email systems, I mean, just limitations that, that extend across the way. Certifications, we had about a third of the department that is not certified firefighter 1 and 2. They will be completely certified by May. Good firefighters, been doing the job a long time, they just lack that, that stamp, that sample of approval, and they're on board with it. We've done training audits, instituted taskbooks, write-up processes, training to prevent backing accidents that cost 50-plus thousand dollars to address. One of our big challenges is trying to build a fire station, which is 2,600 Northern. They've had in the works for quite a while. It's a center of a lot of attention out there, but it is going back, and luckily, we have Keith and his experience with building, and good and bad, let's leave it at that, his experience with building that we can, we can turn to, which takes a set of plans all the way back kind of to zero, and walks through that process. So we're, we're shoring those things up. Surplus apparatus, equipment, SCBA's, PPE, you name it, just trying to get things. And just today, we ordered a, a gear extractor, which you wonder what that is, but that's a special gear washer that, that they don't have. It's, so it's some of those things, and the health and safety of firefighters, that's the carcinogens and everything we're trying to get off that gear and follow best practice. Our priorities, budget process, financial audit, we just went through that, and the auditor understands well. My administrative assistant out there is, is golden, and she's, she's a really a gem that since she came there in January, and then us taking over, we've instituted a lot of processes, checks and balance, payroll, et cetera, et cetera. They're more than happy, the financial audit came back very well, and they were very happy with things that we've instituted out there for that, and continue. Incident command, standing fire ground orders, that was a safety concern that's been expressed over the last couple of years, and, and ties directly to firefighter safety, everyone's safety, really. And our battalion chiefs and their battalion chiefs are, are working very, very well together, almost on a daily and weekly basis, so. And then the health and wellness aspect, they follow us in a few things, but even, even the rest of our fitness program, down to the K-PAT, which is our firefighter obstacle course that we run on an annual basis, they just got through that, which is, which is a huge step for them, so. Airport, I know that's near and dear to a lot of hearts here. We've, we've really turned the focus to that, what are the operations? Again, if we go back, if we go back to the majority of our members, there's a lot of our members, being a young department, but again, that's county and city. There's a lot of our members who haven't been in those buildings. I mean, plain and simple, that's the way it is, that's the way it has been, and that's changing. We've got a formal pre-planning program going, we've even changed the run cars. Now you're seeing a dual, dual response. So for every emergency, aircraft emergency, structural fire, certain call types, those emergent call types, you're seeing Kingman units respond as well, so. They don't have a high frequency of calls, but those are the calls that, that were needed, and we know, and we're going to, we want to be on the road just as quick as anybody else, so. And then, of course, all the responses around there, so. So that's brief, I know it's brief. I did not list the, the challenges upcoming, because we would be here a little while. We have a few, there's, there's no doubt, but, but we're working through those. We've been very busy, Keith and, Keith and Jack were going to hold a, a picket signs tonight to match some of the, the sentiments, but, but it's going well, I can't say it's not. But it's challenging, me and Ron talk about it a lot, and, but it's, it's those steps, and, and no department, some of it is unexpected, but a lot of it is expected. It's, it's the time gap. A lot of things, we were driving out today to have some discussions with some personnel, and it's the same thing that we experienced here five years ago. So it's not much different than the city, it's just different times, expectations, and things like that. So that's really what I have, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to, be glad to answer.
Nice, Mayor.
You've got some good data that shows some positive trends. Are you also giving presentations at their fire district meetings too? Because the citizens of NACFED would seem to benefit more from this information than even we would.
100%, so, so moving in at the six-month mark, which will be January, which will be heading into their budget season, I, we're really working on some, some of this data, as well as the correlation of data between the budget, where we are, and the call volume. Those are, those are very, very important, because if we look at Valley Vista as one of our staff stations, it has to be with the population out there and some of that. But they have, we have to understand valuations, the property valuations, and what it really takes to staff that station, not just from running the station, but whenever you put a, a full-time firefighter, or two a day, 24/7, the, the costs and benefits, everything else is, so it's that understanding and the level of performance where we're going, and we can see it, we can see it during calls. Unfortunately, out there, they have about, anywhere between three and five times the amount of fires, active fires than we do. So I think that, that safety structure, changing things, I call them standing fire ground orders, but what you do when you arrive on scene, we've completely switched that. And, and it's, and it's that structure, accountability, and training. The, the old days of doing things of the way that they've always been done into thinking every scene's a little bit different is, is a change. It is, it's, and that change is difficult. So yes, I, I went way around that question, but yes. So their presentation's coming, it's, it is, it is an educational process, an ongoing. Big scan, put it that way.
Councilor Staley?
I started looking at that list and felt anxious, and then I remembered it's not City of Kingman, and I was relieved. But I just, you know, I want to thank you, make us proud that, that you're going and helping, helping them out, and making it safer for the firefighters that are at NACFED, because they're part of our community, you know, even though they're, they're across some imaginary line, they're, they're still, you know, our community members, so I appreciate that.
Well, I appreciate that.
And then I just wanted to go off of Councilmember Lincolnfelter's, Vice Mayor Lincolnfelter's, point is getting this information out. I hope that there's some media so that the residents who pay into NACFED can really see the improvement that's happened in just such a short amount of time.
Well, that's, there's, so there's a couple focuses there, and, and it's something we've had to follow up and address. I go back to one of the, why do we take this over? And it is, nobody knows where those borders are. Some days I don't, don't say anything to these guys back there, but if you ask me about that borders, no one knows that. They see big red trucks show up. They don't care about what patch is on their shoulder or anything else, and I want the level of service to be as high as possible, and as safe as possible. I think those were, going in, those were our two biggest things, and we had to reemphasize that in our own strategic planning this week, because if I go back to the first couple of years that we did our own strategic plan, we did a horrible job, and we still don't do a very good job of people understanding what we really do. When we talk about accredited ISO 1 and all those things, people don't really understand it. We don't publicize that, we don't publicize all those other things. I, I, we do, we do horrible at that. And out there, we, we have to put a bigger emphasis on why we're doing this and how successful it already has been. And six months from now, it'll be a total different look, it really will, so.
Thank you.
Chief, I just add my thanks to you and, and your whole team, and I really appreciate that you've improved the health and safety of our citizens, and also of the firefighters.
Well, thank you.
Because that's really, really critical, and I hope that as they get this equipment that you're mentioning, and, and their consciousness raises on health and safety of the individual, that we all support that, so.
Well, I would, I would say one last thing, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the two guys in the back room as much grief as they do cause me, that Assist Chief Jack Jaeger and Assist Chief Keith Eaton. I couldn't do this without them, and that's the, that's the strength of having a very, very solid team here. We can turn our attention to the north, we call it the north campus. We can go out there anytime, and we know with our personnel in place here that, that we're well-covered. And I can rely on my chiefs, my battalion chiefs on down to take care of the city at any given moment, so. Couldn't do it without a strong team, and that's, and that's what we have here, which is great.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Nice, very nice department report. Okay, next will be announcements by Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager. Limited to announcements, board and commission liaison reports, availability and attendance at conferences and seminars. Manager Foggan, would you like to start?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just as a commitment to acknowledging our efforts in the 2020 Complete Count Census activities, just want to let you know, again, we are anxious and willing to talk to any groups in the community about the importance of the census. We have a great prezi presentation that we've developed that we're anxious to give, so any groups that would like to have guest speakers, obviously, with the, we understand we're in the holiday month or months, and so, but just want to make sure that we're putting out that invite to, invite us to come and speak with any groups that would be interested in learning more about the census and why it's important, and, and if we don't get calls, we're going to be calling them, so, just to let everybody know about that. And then I, I received a text from a little bird reminding me that we have an angel tree in the lobby, and there's a lot of tags on it. And the deadline, I know, I don't want to put anybody, alarm them, but Christmas is quickly coming. And we, we need to get those tags taken off, because the presents that are associated with those tags are due back by Monday, and this coming Monday, yes. So please, please, if you've pulled tags, please have the gifts back. If you haven't, please consider pulling a tag. And then I noticed that our Toys for Tots boxes, or at least the box here at City Hall, is running awfully short, and so, and just encourage people, as they're looking for giving opportunities, Toys for Tots is a program that is a great giving program, that's been around for a long time and can be trusted, so that's, that's what I have for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Manager. Councilor Watkins? Councilor Wade?
Yes, I just have a, a quick announcement. The Kingman Chapter for Sleep in Heavenly Peace, which is a nonprofit organization that builds beds for kids here in Kingman, is doing another Build Day on December 14th at 9 o'clock. It will be at River Valley Community Outreach Center, which is 3060 Airway Avenue here in Kingman. So we're going to do another handful of, of beds to give out to kids. I don't know if handful is the right terminology, a gaggle of beds, or, or an army of beds. So we're going to do that on the 14th of Saturday, and everybody's welcome to join us in building those beds. Just to put it into perspective, last time I posted the beds for people to submit applications, we got over 90 applications for people in the community who were seeking these beds for, for their, for children. And unfortunately, we weren't able to fulfill all of those applications, but I know that there are more people who, who would benefit from these things. And it's something that the community, you know, something we can give back to the community. I, I wanted to make a quick shout-out to KRM C for sponsoring this next Build Day, for their donation, as well as the Venture Club, and the Kingman Quilters Guild gave us about at least 20 quilts already. They're their comfort quilts, so we're going to put those with the beds as we deliver them. We're going to deliver a couple of beds as well on the 14th. So everyone's welcome to join us in, in volunteering and helping us build the beds, and if anyone wants to make a donation to the Kingman Chapter, they're welcome to do that on shpbeds.org, and just specify the Kingman Chapter, so we can try and fulfill, you know, all of those applications, which I'm sure as soon as I post it again, there will be a, a lot more, so that's my announcement.
Thank you. Councilor Staley?
I can't follow up after that.
Councilor Nelson? Noah Keener, Vice Mayor?
Just report that on the 26th of this last month, we had a Historical Preservation Commission meeting and an Economic Development Advisory Commission, both great commission meetings, and this Thursday, where the City of Kingman is hosting an A A E D, Arizona Association for Economic Development, Arizona Rural Western Roundtable, I think I got the name right, but just wanted to say thank you to Gary Kalag, our Economic Development Director and his staff, for all the work that they've done to, to prepare for that and facilitate that, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to also add thanks for the shop, small events that happened this past Saturday, and to thank the Chamber, and MCCS, BDC, and Main Street, all the, all the businesses downtown that participated. It was a really good showing of support, I think, for, for the downtown and for our small businesses, and I really appreciate all the efforts that went into that. I would mention that this coming Monday, I'll be in Phoenix attending the Mojave County Basin Water Users Study Group. This will be in Phoenix, it'll be our second meeting. Again, this is on the, this is the group of stakeholders that has been appointed to study the aquifer reports and make recommendations by, well, as we go along, I hope. And finally, on a positive note, the Parade of Lights is this Saturday at 7:00 p.m. downtown, and we're going to have a lovely parade, and we're also going to have at the end of it, hot chocolate, and Santa, and lots of things for the family, and the lighting of the tree, and maybe more surprises of lights and other things, too. And so please plan to attend the Parade of Lights if you can, again, at 7 o'clock this, this Saturday. That's all I have, and so we'll move on to the next issue, which is Council requests for future work session agenda items and/or calendar adjustments. Do we have any? Everybody, Vice Mayor?
I would have, the first one would be that I'd like to have a work session, or I'd like staff to explore some areas or some spots that are under the city's control on this side of downtown, where motorcoaches or buses could park, with the thought process being that they would get off their bus on this side of downtown, they would walk down, pass all of our businesses downtown, go visit the powerhouse, visit the locomotive, then come back through downtown, get back on their bus. I'd like to know if there's any spaces on this side of town where the buses could park where we could accomplish that. And the second thing I'd like to just double-check with Manager Foggan is, I know we have a legislative agenda update work session coming up. Listening to the chief's discussion on the fire service, I know that during our budget work sessions, we had Andrew McGuire here, and he mentioned a certain type of fire district that was not yet included under statute, and that we may want to make a play for that this next year, and I just want to make sure that discussion is part of our legislative agenda work session. Thank you.
Good points.